This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eli O'Sullivan Kurtz. I will be the moderator for this morning's virtual town hall. I'm the operations specialist at Northland Neighborhoods Incorporated. We are hosting this event. We're very glad to have you here today. Wanted to give you some quick instructions. We'd like everyone who's tuning in as a listener to please mute their microphones and turn off their cameras just to cut down on any potential interference, audio or visual. There is a chat window that's available if you're joining by computer or tablet, and you're welcome to use that to ask any questions that you might have for the congressman, and we will answer as many of those as we can in the time that we have together. At this point, I want to take a step aside and welcome Congressman Emmanuel Cleaver to the town hall. Good morning, Congressman. How are you?
Good morning. Thank you very much.
Good. Good. We're really glad to have you. I wanted to give you the opportunity to say some opening remarks before we got into the questions, so I'll give you the floor.
First, let me thank Deb Herman. The sound is going in and out. Hopefully, hopefully, everyone can hear me because it just before I spoke, things were going in and out. So I'll proceed. I have an assumption that everyone can hear. I wanted to thank Deb Herman for getting this organized. One of the, one of the things that we are doing, probably all over the country, members of Congress, are having meetings through this system and Zoom almost all day, all long, all day long. Usually, we start in the morning and I end in the around 6:00 in the afternoon. When I get off this call, I will be involved in another town hall meeting and...
Congressman, I think you may have cut out there a little bit. Last we heard was talking about how you're going to be going until 6:00 with meetings today. Congressman, I'm seeing your login here says that you are offline. I think we may need you to jump out and then back in for a moment. Thanks, everyone, for your patience while we're dealing with these technical issues. Obviously, virtual town halls are somewhat new in this current day and age, and we're trying to get things resolved as quickly as we can. But of course, there are problems that we learn about every time, so we appreciate your patience. And again, we've got a couple of questions here to start. I know that we've got about an hour, 45 minutes available for this, so if you have any questions, we'd really love to answer those for you. Welcome back, Congressman. Congressman, it looks like you're reconnected and unmuted. Are you able to hear us and be heard yourself? I can see we are, your microphone is kind of muting and unmuting, but your camera seems like it's frozen. All right. Okay, camera is unfrozen now. If you're having audio issues, hold on just a second. Let me see if this helps. Okay, give that another try. See if you can talk to me.
Yeah, I think, I think there doesn't appear to be any disruption, I don't think.
Okay, well, we can hear you now, so I think you're free to proceed.
Let me, let me again, again, thank Deb Herman for organizing this. It provides me with the, an opportunity to maintain contact with the people in that, whom I represent, and also maybe more importantly, to hear from them. This is a particularly tough time for, for our country. As I was saying earlier, I chaired the Committee on International Development, Security, National Security and Monetary Policy, which means that the Federal Reserve is one of the entities that reports to my committee. And so we are dealing, dealing almost always with issues of unemployment and, and trying to reduce, either reduce inflation or reduce the likelihood of inflation. The Fed has a dual mandate. The bad news is that the US economy has shrank by 4.8% since January 1. And Goldman Sachs, Goldman Sachs, rather, is an institution that we think of primarily as bank, banking, investment banking, but they also do a lot of, a lot of economic studies. And one of the, one of the things that has struck me is that they're saying that unemployment this summer will hit about 16%, which is, would be at the, at the level of the Great Recession. The difference is that this is not brought on by mismanagement in banks or any other exterior factors. It's, it's been promoted by a, an international pandemic, and we've got to try to figure out actually how to maintain the, the nation. We can get into that, some of that later. But that's the difference between now and 2008. The second quarter predictions are, or even more dire, there's a projection according to Goldman Sachs that we will have the sharpest fall in US history. So that's why we've been dealing with trying to pump money into the economic bloodstream of the country and, and pumping a lot of it. And this last CARES package may not be the last. I could probably be better available to you by responding to your issues and concerns.
Certainly. And of course, we all appreciate the work you're doing to try and make this bearable for everyone here in the country. So thank you very much for that. I'm going to go ahead and jump into our first question. This is from listener Richard Hurtig. The question is, "The representatives from the state of Missouri are at both extremes of the fiscal support for state and local governments. Please highlight the concerns associated with fiscal support for those state and local governments." Thank you.
Well, I am unabashedly a supporter of trying to pump money into municipalities. In fact, I have been a person who has pushed for this next package to be heavily leaning toward states and municipalities. Let me just tell you, let's just take a little view of Kansas City. Right now, Kansas City is getting no sales tax revenue, zero. And that means that a lot of those, I'm the, I'm the person that introduced what everybody calls Pyatt during the, my third term on the city council. And we went after those revenue, sales tax revenues to support Pyatt. And so every neighborhood ought to be concerned about the fact that the sales tax revenues are just not coming in. In addition to that, the earnings tax revenues in Kansas City, Missouri are just falling, almost in a free fall. And yet, we have Dan Fowler on here. I think he would confirm that. You're not getting the sale, the money from the airport that the city gets when, when cars are rented. It's, it's just going to be a very, very tough time. The state is responsible for sending out the unemployment benefits. You can imagine that when, when this is over, the state coffers will be depleted. Now, we did provide the state with some dollars for enhanced unemployment benefits, but that's going to run out as, as well. So if we want to have a collapse, I mean, a really collapse into the days of the Depression, we can, all Congress has to do is cripple the state and local governments to the point that they, they can't function. They can't collect the garbage. You know, they can't pay on, on the debt, its debt, the municipal debt. And the list grows longer and longer, the more we look at what's going on now and what needs of the city might be. You know, you, one of the, every, every, every sales tax engine is down, and so that's going to also hurt new development, because nothing is going on anywhere inside the city. There is some work on highways, but for the most part, there's no construction going. So I'm not one of the people who are saying, you know, the cities and the states are on their own. And one of the reasons is, you know, all of my life, I believed that we were the United States. And that means that, that the federal government, government exists in part to provide, when necessary, survival support to, to states. So I will be voting for it very proudly. And I know there are folk probably who are saying, you know, let everybody just, let the states go into bankruptcy. I think that is a fool's errand, and I don't want to go on that errand.
Makes sense. Thank you very much. All right. So our next question is from listener Mark Walter. The question is, "The clean energy industry believes changing the renewable energy investment, investment tax credit into a grant would save tens of thousands of jobs being lost to the coronavirus. Do you support the proposed legislation to make this change?"
I do. I do. I would vote for it. However, I try to be realistic, and sometimes that, you know, gets me in trouble. But that, that will, that won't, won't pass. It might pass in the House. It would be a close vote even in the House. But I can guarantee you that it will not pass in the Senate. I think that right now, and it's, most people are not paying much attention to it, but right now, many of the issues surrounding the environment and energy conservation and grants from the federal government to do those kinds of things is at a very low level compared to, say, the last 15 years. So there, we're in a, in a situation now where many of the, the things that the, like the Environmental Protection Agency has put in place are being removed. And I try to always, when people ask me those questions, to be straight. And my straight answer is that I support it, but I can tell you that it would be the stunner of the century if it received enough votes.
Certainly. Do you think there's anything at this point that could help, that citizens could do to help out that effort? Or is it mostly in the hands of Congress at this point?
Well, it's not in the hands of Congress. It's mainly in the head of, in the hands of the administration. And I would, I would dare say that even the EPA administrator won't support it. And I think, you know, while all of the, while a lot of things have been going on publicly, very quietly, regulation after regulation after regulation has been eliminated or is not being enforced by the Environmental Protection Agency. I want to also remind everybody that the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, was created by that old liberal, Richard Milhouse Nixon. And I think people may not even know, or may have forgotten, but President Nixon realized that we were doing enormous damage to the, to the environment, and we were not creating energy in ways that would preserve our atmosphere. And I don't know if any of you have seen the photographs of the planet from space before and after the shelter in place, but there's a dramatically different view. Now, I understand, you know, because we're not getting a lot of the smoke pumped, being pumped into the atmosphere. And I don't, and I don't think we ought to have to make a false choice of, do we preserve the planet? Or we, do we preserve our way of life? I think both can happen. And, and, you know, when, we have all kinds of ways in which we can very slowly transfer to clean energy. It's not going to be done overnight. I support, right now, coal-fired power plants, we, because we can't shut them down. I had a long meeting yesterday with the CEO of Kansas City Power and Light, and I support what they're doing. They're being, they're being good citizens right now in terms of shut offs. But it's not an easy subject to, to deal with. So you have to deal with it, I think, I have to deal with it straightforwardly. And it is that, you know, the, the public probably is not even aware of many of the changes that are being made, but because there are more pressing issues on the table. But it's not a, it's not a vote of Congress right now. It's, it's, it's been done by the administration.
Gotcha. Well, thank you very much for the clarification there. All right. So our next question is from listener KF. The question is, "Could you talk about the SJR 38 gerrymandering bill and whether you will be supporting it or not?"
I don't even know much about it. I know there's one that has been filed. It probably won't come to, to the floor to vote. And so I have not even read it. The way, the way this thing works is, most of us are preoccupied with the issues in our own, in our own subcommittee, and we become, you know, fluent in those issues and other issues as they approach the floor. We probably will have maybe between now and January, maybe 40 days of, of, of actually voting. Usually, in an election year, all of August is, is a recess. And when we come back in September, we'll, we'll do probably almost all of September, but about half of October because of the November election. And members of the House are up every two years. The Senate, of course, is staggered terms. So I don't, I don't know much about the bill, but I think the issues, unfortunately, the surrounding gerrymandering are, are issues that will ultimately be resolved in the Supreme Court. And let me just say editorially, I wish everybody in Congress had a district like mine. If they did, we would have a lot less nastiness, and people would, would work together. If I can just add, look, I represent the largest city in Kansas, in the state of Missouri, Kansas City, and it's not even close. In fact, I'll show some information. In, in, in 1950, St. Louis was the seventh largest city in the United States. Kansas City was down about 85. Right now, we have St. Louis almost doubled in population. We are unofficially at about 516, I think, Dan. And St. Louis is trying to stay above 300,000. So, you know, our, our state is, is growing, but very slowly. I represent Kansas City, and then I represent Mayview. It's 250 people. I represent Oryc, 800 people. I represent Richmond, Excelsior Springs, Sweet Springs, Odessa, Lexington, Concordia, Higginsville, Slater, Marshall. And I probably missed some of the other, other cities. So if everybody had a district like that, an urban section, a suburban, and then a rural, nobody could, would, would, would get elected if they only wanted to concentrate on their little one area, their little base. They'd have to respond to everyone. Now, for me, I was unfortunate. I was born in Waukesha, Texas, and a family with, both of my grandpas were farmers. And so I, I can speak, I can speak farm. And, and then, you know, I, at the same time, I'm able to deal with the urban issues as well. Gerrymandering, gerrymandering is awful, and it is a, it is a major factor in the hostility we see in the country right now.
Of course, yes. A follow-up question about that. So you had mentioned that Congress typically takes August as a recess in an election year. Do you see any indication that the pandemic is going to change congressional attendance and recesses from the norm that we see most of the time?
Absolutely. We, we were called two, two days ago and told that we may have to come back next week for a vote on, on CARES 2, the CARES package number two. Every member of the Congress, because we're talking with each other all day in, in meetings like this, there's, there's hardly anyone who wants to go back. Not because people want to lay up and eat bun buns and watch soap operas. I don't even know if they still have soap operas, but, but at any rate, but because, you know, getting on these airplanes makes everybody nervous. Now, I flew up for the last meeting. There were 11 people on my flight going up and 13 on, on my return flight. What I can tell you, I had a face mask and gloves and everything on all the way, and I was really, really so concerned that since I've been back home, I've been sleeping upstairs in a separate bedroom from my wife and not getting within six feet of my wife or my, or my son, who flew in from Atlanta, because he didn't like what was going on in Georgia as it relates to the openness, to stay until things got better in Georgia, he's going to go back. So I, I think that we, they, what they did is they had, there are 435 members of Congress, and normally, you, we have a, a voting cart. You just stick it in the back, back of the, the seat there, there's a little voting machine, and you vote it. And so it's quick. It's, it's very quick. You know, it's dramatically faster than the old days when they had to call the roll. And so you could, you could literally vote on one, if you just had one issue, you could literally vote on 10 seconds, and everybody could, could go out. It took almost two hours to go and vote for one issue, because they sent us in, you know, like three at a time. So members are weary. And frankly, everyone is thinking, you know, what kind of, what kind of example are we setting when we're telling everybody else to maintain distance? Now, the, the Rules Committee, which was chaired for years by Richard Bowling, who sat in, in the seat I occupy, is working now on trying to create an opportunity for members to have voting at home on one of these platforms like this go-to that we're on right now. It's a problem. Some of the members, you know, some of the members are not willing to accept that we're in a pandemic, so they're saying, no, we don't need to do that. But it's not just for pandemics, and this will not be the last one. But when 9/11 occurred, members that we lost contact with cell phones, and then Washington, everything was, was disrupted, and we, the Congress was unable to meet. So, you know, I think in order to maintain a functioning government, we've got to have something in place. And so I think we're going to eventually vote on something. Unfortunately, it may, it may, it may go down on partisan lines, as too many things are doing, or are actually occurring then in Congress. So we will, I'm going to go back next week with great concern. I've had friends to die. Reverend Marvin Jackson unfortunately decided to go to a convention over into KCK of this denomination, the Church of God in Christ. And as, as you probably read in, in the news, a number of those pastors have died. And Marvin Jackson happened to have been one of who I was, whom I had a close relationship. And then I've had the woman who welcomed me to St. James when I was a 25-year-old seminary student. They brought me on to this little church called St. James down in the 3rd Congressional District, and she welcomed me at the door, Lily Swinton. She has died as well, living in a, well, a state or nursing home. It's a seniors apartment, but they eat, eat dinner and lunch together every day. So I'm taking it very seriously, but you didn't ask me all that, but I'm going back to Washington and hope, and hope that we can figure out a way in which we can vote from home until the attending physician tells us that it's okay. Now, even though the Senate is in session, it may be important for you to know that the attending physician, that we have a attending physician, physician that's in the Capitol. We have, we have a, a small hospital. It's a naval operation. He sent a letter to Senator McConnell last week telling him that he did not think the environment was safe enough for the Senate to return. So, you know, going is not one of the things I would, wouldn't want anybody in my family to do, but I'm going, I have no choice. I've got to be there to represent the district and do everything I can to stay safe and, and then pray. Hello?
My apologies. I had my microphone muted. I was saying, "We are certainly sorry to hear about the losses close to you and your family as a result of the pandemic, and we appreciate all of the precautions you're taking, both personally and professionally." So condolences, but also thanks. I think a pretty natural follow-up question. You had said that Congress is working on a way to figure out a remote voting system for you folks over there. Deb Herman wants to know, "Do you support citizens voting by mail?"
Absolutely. And look, you know, I hate being political. All of us, we get too much of that. Number one, we don't have voter fraud in the United States. Essentially, it does not even exist. I think in Washington State, where they just had a complete election by mail, I think they had 12, 12 incidents of what was categorized as voter fraud. And some of it wasn't even, in my estimation, wasn't even voter fraud. There was some, you know, people, you know, vote from an address vote from an address from which they do not live, even though they're registered voters. So I think we need to do that. We are, and the political scientists who have studied this issue say that there's no benefit to either political party when you vote by mail. I don't, so I don't understand the resistance to that, and that's at least what many people say is a reason for the attempt to shut down the postal service. That and the long-held desire to privatize it, but I support it. And there are numbers of people on both sides who support, you know, voting by mail. We may have to do that. I don't know if you know that those people you saw on television lined up in Ohio around the block, that a number of them were later, who later contracted the coronavirus. So I think it's dangerous if we continue to do that kind of thing, when we know we can we can do something that will allow more Americans to vote and do so safely.
Makes sense, yes, indeed. All right, so moving right along, I know we've got another fifteen minutes or so scheduled at the regular time, we started a little bit late. Do you have a hard limit of eleven fifteen Eastern time there? Okay, great. So the next question is from Richard Hertig again. The question is, the $1,200 stimulus monies were a godsend to any number of individuals, but the time to distribute those monies were not quick or efficient. Do you foresee additional stimulus monies or alternatives to the $1,200 checks?
Well, yeah, one of the problems, let me preface my response by saying, one of the problems is that Treasury had to do this along with Social Security and IRS, they worked together to get those $1,200 checks out. But they were able to get them out when they did, because it was infinitely easier to get checks to people who do direct banking. And so, and then if you had a direct deposit from, for your Social Security check, not that anybody on this line is old enough to get Social Security, I'm not suggesting any of you people, of course, but if the people you know, you know, received their Social Security check by direct payment, they got the $1,200 quickly in about three weeks. I'm going to say something now that I'm embarrassed to tell you, but we've been told that some people may not get that first check until August. And the reason is the IRS and Social Security would have to do detective work to try to find some of the people. And they're reporting to us when we raise questions, that it is quite difficult in some cases to locate people. So I listened to an economist today who said that we are a foolhardy Congress if we believe that that is going to do it, that that one $1,200 check is going to sufficiently take people, you know, to a better place financially. I agree, I'm on a on a bill, actually, with Republicans, and Josh Hawley was the first person to bring the issue up. He has proposed, and I'm the House sponsor of the same legislation, that we start sending Americans some check of some amount every week until we are in full recovery or close to that. Now, if you, Josh Hawley is considered one of the top five conservatives in the Senate, maybe on the planet. And so, but he sees what's going on around him, and so he's been able to push political party affiliation aside and say, hey, look, people are struggling out here, and I can tell you, they are. The restaurants in those states that have been allowed to open up, found out what I knew would happen, and what many of us said would happen, and that is, nobody's going in there. Our economy is not going to rebound until we have consumer confidence that things are safe. And the only way that's going to happen is that we have sufficient number of people who are tested. We put a lot of money into testing, and some of that money was given to Jackson County, and Jackson County has $122 million, but with that money, they've got to take care of, I think, eight cities and towns that are in Jackson County. But testing is involved in that, until we're able to do that, I think this pandemic is going to have its way with us.
Yeah, I think a lot of what you're saying there resonates with a lot of our listeners here, so I'll go ahead and proceed to the next question here. This is from AF. The question is, what are your thoughts on a Medicare-for-all type of healthcare system in the U.S.?
I, you know, I support having an insurance or healthcare coverage for every American. I would prefer, right now, to repair the damage to the Affordable Care Act than to go out for Medicaid, Medicare-for-all. A part of it is political, and that is, you know, for whatever reason, some of the people who have been pushing this issue of Medicare-for-all unintentionally created a very divisive issue. They were trying to figure out how to cover all Americans, I think, and I support them in that effort. But it's become, it's become so political that it's going to be difficult to do. Now, every president, going all the way back to Dwight Eisenhower, has tried to get a national healthcare plan approved by Congress. And the plan that was used to draft the Affordable Care Act was, in no small part, taken from the Richard Nixon plan for national healthcare. So the concept of everybody in this country having healthcare, I support 100%, it's being done all over the Western Hemisphere. And anecdotally, my nephew, my sister's played basketball here in Raytown South, and then eventually was picked up by University of Wisconsin, and he played there for four years. And then he fooled around a little, trying to latch on here in the United States NBA. He was eventually signed by a team out of France, and he stayed over there for 12 years. And we have a family flaw of Achilles' heels, twin boys, both of them have had their Achilles operated on. And my youngest son, I told him, I just want to go have an operation, because it'll save some time before he even injures it. We have a lot of that. So Derek Durham, my nephew, fell on the court playing a basketball game in Germany, and they picked him up off the floor, drove him to the hospital, he had surgery, and they took him to his apartment, and then whatever rehabilitation that was done, people came out to his apartment. Now, he has dual citizenship in the U.S. and France, so his medical bill eventually came, and so he signed it and sent it back. You know, I think we can do better than what we're doing, but whatever it is, we've got to fight this villain of poison, of political involvement in everything.
Yeah, I think the sort of political, you might describe it as partisanship that you're talking about, is certainly a critical issue going on right now. So, next question here from Deb Herman. Citizens are getting confusing facts and directions from the president's pandemic team. Who should we listen to?
The scientists, the people who went to medical school and did really well, made As and Bs, the same people we would want to go to if we were going to have some kind of surgery. I know Dr. Farcy, I don't want Vice President Pence operating on me, I don't want President Trump operating on me, I don't want my wife operating on me, I don't want my German Shepherd operating on me, I want to go to somebody who knows what they're doing. And we've got to listen to these experts. Dr. Farcy is not partisan, he has served under four different presidents, Republican and Democratic. And so I just, I don't, I just don't understand it. And a lot of information that's going out is not correct, and it's dangerous. I saw, you guys may have seen something on TV over the weekend where a guy was fighting a police officer and screaming, there is no pandemic. He was trying to get him to break up a crowd of people. I think that was somewhere on the East Coast, I can't remember, you can probably Google and find it, you can find everything with Google now. So I think, you know, we had a lot of calls, mainly from Kansas, from people wanting to know if they could drink Lysol. And, you know, somebody, they may not have heard it said on television, but then somebody told them, you know, they said Lysol can prevent or cure coronavirus, and it's extremely dangerous. And we have some of the best minds in the world, right here in the United States, in terms of medicine and medical research. The National Health, National Institute of Health is one of the best in the world, the CDC in Atlanta is one of the best in the world. We ought to listen to those people. And, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, we've had enough damage done that we'll stop doing it. And it's hard to answer some of these questions without, you know, sounding political. I think my colleagues in Washington on both sides would tell you, I try to stay away from that stuff and try to deal with the issues that are real and in front of us. Sometimes it's difficult to get around it, if I'm going to be truthful, so I apologize, didn't mean to insult anybody, but I think that's irrefutable, what I just said.
Well said, yes, thank you very much. All right, so we're getting into our last few questions here. I'm going to combine two of them for the sake of relevance. So Daniel Fowler says, one of the traditional ways of working out of a recession is increased spending on infrastructure. With the FAST Act expiring in September, do you foresee an infrastructure bill or some sort of infrastructure stimulus emerging from Congress in the near future? And then Richard Hertig wanted to know specifically about infrastructure monies for Kansas City water and sewer infrastructure, saying that high water bills are in part due to federal mandates to update the water and sewer infrastructure.
Yes, well, Dan Fowler and I had a conversation in my office in DC, we didn't go into this lengthy detail, but I was really excited when I heard the president say that he wanted an infrastructure bill about two months ago. And yes, on Monday, and then again today at three o'clock, the Democratic Caucus will be holding a meeting to talk about cares package two. Unfortunately, there will be only a minimal amount of money put into that cares package two, if we are able to get it approved, that will deal with infrastructure. Now, there is, I think, a bipartisan position right now that we get an infrastructure bill, and I support a bill that would be about $2 trillion. We've never had a bill, an infrastructure bill that high, and that still won't deal with all of our problems. But I think that the Fed Chairman is going to support it. The U.S. Chamber, not related to the Kansas City Chamber or the Northland Chamber, but the U.S. Chamber, which is a very conservative chamber, and they deal with economic issues, but they are also supporting a large infrastructure bill. Now, I am also a member of the Select Committee on Congressional Modernization. Whenever you see someone, hear somebody on the news and they say he or she is from the Select Committee, it means that it's a committee that's been just created for that particular session of Congress to deal with a very specific issue. We have two, we have one on energy conservation and environment, and then we have the Committee on Modernization. Every fifty years, the Speaker of the House, whomever is in that seat, will appoint a bipartisan group of 12 people to recommend changes in Congress to modernize it. We will meet, that committee, the Committee on Modernization will meet today, I'm one of the members, and today our whole meeting will be on earmarks, what we're going to recommend, what we're going to recommend on earmarks. The reason I mention that is I will not vote for a, an infrastructure bill unless members of Congress have the opportunity to designate where those dollars are being spent. And if that sounds extremely political, it's not. I would rather have somebody who lives in the district where I live, if I were a voter, picking the projects based on what he or she is hearing from the constituents, as opposed to some guy sitting in a basement in one of the office buildings who's never been west of the Mississippi, deciding what infrastructure project should be funded in my district. I think that is absolutely ludicrous, and most members of Congress are going to follow suit, not all, but the majority. Everybody in our delegation, with the exception of one person, supports earmarks, because what would happen is if I had this meeting, Deb organized a meeting after that money's been allocated, and everybody starts asking me, well, now Congressman, where, what are the projects in our, in our areas? What, why aren't we getting, you know, some money for roads and bridges? And because if I were not in Congress and I were a taxpayer, I'd be asking the same question. So we've got to have earmarks, and if we do, I think we'll get the infrastructure bill approved. And there's widespread support in the business communities and in Congress to do it. Senator McConnell announced last week that he didn't think we needed one. We're hoping that the president can change his mind. Everybody, all you have to do is get on I-70, all you have to do is drive around on the streets in Kansas City, whether it's north or south, or in my neighborhood, southeast, roads and potholes and everything else is doing enormous damage to us and billions of dollars of damage to automobiles every single year. We need to be able to put money into our utility, municipal utilities, like water and sewage, that is infrastructure. And I think in this bill, infrastructure will be, and the Modernization Committee, one thing that everybody's already voted on, we know it's going to be in our presentation to Congress as a whole, is that earmarks can only go to either not-for-profits or government-related facilities. So in the old days, before I was elected, you know, let's say John Doe was building a housing development for profit, John could get an earmark to reduce his development cost. And while that's, you know, valuable, people started doing it, you know, their cousin was, you know, doing something and building something, and so they built a road for their cousin. I'm overstating it a little, not much. And so I think the cities, the counties, the municipalities will all qualify. I mean, we've got a, one of the big costs that I'm dealing with now is the relatively new federal courthouse, which federal courthouse, which has a tremendously costly windows problem over there. So we're going to have to replace windows, and it doesn't just go into the hundreds, hundreds of thousands, it goes into the millions. But we, this is our chance, and we may not have a chance like this again, maybe in our lifetime. We'll never have another chance to get a $2 trillion infrastructure bill. It would deal with so many of our things. Sam Graves and I probably could meet together and do, maybe, depending on how much each member gets, could do the Buck O'Neill Bridge, and which should be redone. Most of you are too young to remember that. In my, same program that we created to do, building a new American Royal, 18th and Vine, we also stopped the 25 cents toll bridge that it cost to go back and forth from Kansas City into Kansas City. So there are a lot of things we can do. I would love to work with those of you on the call, particularly the Congressman and the former Congressperson, Deb Herman, to look at projects that are north of the river, but in my district. Most of the, most of the Northland is in Sam Graves' district, but I have Clay County, which goes over into Broad Cliff West, and it goes in the other direction over to the automobile plant. So yes, let's all hope that we can get that done. And actually, we ought to have one up unless there's some more fighting going on in Congress. We should have that on the floor in about three weeks, maybe, maybe four weeks at the latest. And the president has said he wanted it.
Good, it sounds like there's a lot of motion going on in that direction, so glad for the update there. Thank you very much. We are going to move to our last question here, and it's pointed at state-level politics, so I will add a little bit of a federal-level politics angle for this, too. If there is something happening in the Missouri or U.S. Congress that citizens do not agree with, what is the best way to make our voices heard? Does calling our representatives actually help change their minds? This is a question from KF.
They may not change their mind, but it'll make them nervous. Let me give you a secret. At the end of the day, or maybe in some cases, end of the week, members have staff meetings, and in the staff meetings, there's a report on the issues that they've heard about on the phone. Every member of Congress does it. And so, you know, if some of the members say, if one of the staffers says, "Congressman, we got 5,000 calls to support infrastructure." No matter what I thought, I'd start, "Oh, man, oh, geez, something's going on." And the answer, because of what I just said, is that it does make a difference, and sometimes it can change a member's mind. Now, what does not work, and what I try to tell people all the time, is somebody, an organization will get, you know, four, 5,000 cards, and they'll have them printed, and they'll have all of their members or constituents sign their names on it. That's rarely impactful, because everybody recognizes that it was organized by the people who are enthusiastic about it. But it might have been signed by people who didn't even know exactly what they were signing. And so, a lot of times, we'll get 1,000 postcards saying the same thing, printed on very similar cards, but signed by different people. If I were running a neighborhood group, I would, I'd do something else. I'd say, "I know, you know, people don't like to do this, but do a handwritten note. You're going to be stupid. We need you to vote for this," and then sign your name. Somebody else can say, "Dummy, you know, we need you to vote for this." And I think that has far more power than sending a lot of postcards that look the same. And phone calls matter. When I meet with my staff, it's 3:00. We have a 3:00 meeting every day. I can't stand for the entire period because of other meetings going on, but we go over the calls. Every member of Congress, I can tell you, they do that. What are the majority of the calls about? Right now, for example, yesterday, the majority of our calls were coming from people who are upset because they haven't received their enhanced unemployment benefit, the $600. And also from small businesses, saying that they've not been able to access the payroll protection program, that they've not been able to get the loans from banks. So I can tell you on any day what the majority of the phone calls say at the end of that day.
Wonderful, thank you very much for that. So we've arrived at the end of our questions. I want to give you another opportunity to cover anything that you didn't see covered but wanted to get out in front of the public. Do you have any other topics that you'd like to discuss?
Well, yes, let me, first, before I go, let me thank, again, Deb Herman for doing this. And I have envied the way in which the Northland is organized, and as opposed to the part of the city that probably needs it even more, the urban core, in terms of neighborhood organization, neighborhood impact. The things that are going on in Washington today are extremely, extremely important. But one of the things that people may not be focused on is the attempt to close down the post office, the whole postal service. And for years, there's been this desire to privatize the postal service, and that's foolhardy. Every day in the United States, postal workers deliver 1.6, they go to 1.6 mailboxes all over the country. And you may not know, the postal workers are not highly paid, and they have to, they go in through rain, sleet, hail, snow, German Shepherds, pit bulls, and coronavirus. Every day, they do it. And what we have right now is a system that goes into every part of this country. Being from Waxatchee, my grandmother's post office box, I'll always remember, when I'm on my deathbed, I'll be able to tell you, she was, her post office box was 563. And so, because in a small town, the postal service is even more important. It's almost, the post office is a place to go and socialize. My grandmother would meet with her sister-in-law, my aunt, and about three or four other women from our church every day at 2:00 to pick up their mail and then go home. If you privatize the postal service, nobody is going to want to drive, have people delivering mail in Slater. Slater, Missouri is about 100 and maybe 25 miles from here. Now, it's the home of Steve McQueen, the actor, the deceased actor, but it's a town of maybe 600, 700 people, and every street there is named Steve McQueen. But you close down the mailbox, you close down the postal service, and a private entity gets it, they're not going to get mail out there because they can't afford to drive to Slater. They can't afford to deliver a few pieces of mail to Oak Grove. You know, so we're going to end up, whoever does it is going to do something special, like maybe once a week or twice a month, they'll go out there because it's not economical for any company to do it. But the postal service can do it because it's not-for-profit. And contrary to what people believe, the postal service is not funded by your tax dollars. They receive, there's no, you can go, after we get off this, and check to see if I'm making it up. There's no line item for the postal service in the federal budget. And the post office operates exclusively off of the revenue generated from the stamps and so forth. But then what the federal government did in 2006, I was there and voted, know, is that in an attempt to try to put the post office in a bad spot so that they would have to collapse, and then they could have it privatized, a bill went through Congress that allowed, that forced the postal service to make payments on future pensions, and it's $75 billion. And so, no other institution in the country nor government agency is operating with that kind of hammer over their heads. So is the post office in trouble financially? Yes, but it's because of what was done to put them in financial straits so that they would have to go under. In our CARES II package, you'd find that we are putting money to build out the postal service, to put them on solid footing again, because as, even if, even if some of you are huge business people, you might want to understand that this, there's no way this can be a good business deal for any private entity. And of course, the postal service operates trying to give, deliver mail, you know, as economically as possible. They've been ordered very recently by the president to raise their rates, but they have resisted. And, you know, you know, trying to make sure that now, more than ever, the rate remains the same. The final thing is, if you, if you live in Anoriq and you are 85 years old, the postal service is extremely important to you, because not only do you see another human being every day, but your medications are coming in the mail, and you're able to get your letters. You don't, you're not going to see a lot of these Amazon deliveries being done in these small towns. They do, but, you know, they may be, it may be added five, six, 10 days before that delivery gets there. So I'm asking all of you to think about your position. There's a bipartisan group of us who are pushing, I had an op-ed in the Star last week, last Sunday, that you can read and get more information, or go online and read. It's unfortunate what's going on. It's demoralizing to the people who get up every day and put the mail in our mailbox. So I appreciate this opportunity to share with you. You're welcome to call it office. Nobody's ever, we pick up the calls, and if we're able to respond to you, particularly in this difficult time, we actually want to do it. And I said to our staff, every day, we meet every day at 3:00, "Look, everybody's hurting, and we've got to do everything we can possibly do to, you know, eliminate, or at least reduce the pain that they're all experiencing." So God bless you, and I hope to stay safe, and I hope all of you and your families will do so as well.
Wonderful, yes. Well, thank you very much for your time, Congressman Cleaver. I got to say, as somebody, my grandma was the first woman to carry mail in her small Kansas hometown, and I have a lot of postal service friends around the country, so I appreciate you making that issue a little more known to the folks who tuned in today. Once again, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule and wish you all the best as this pandemic continues. This is Eli O'Sullivan Kurtz for Northland Neighborhoods Incorporated, and we thank everyone who tuned in to our virtual town hall today. We will be doing more of these events in the future with various folks in Kansas City and Missouri and even on the national level, so be sure to tune into those. And in the meantime, I hope everyone stays safe out there.